Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first virtual meeting of the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership. My name is Rachel Wilson. I'm the Democratic Services Officer who provides support to the partnership. I would like firstly confirm that today's meeting is being audio broadcast and recorded. Can I please remind members of our meeting etiquette? When invited to speak, councillors and officers should unmute their microphones and switch on their video. And when councillors and officers have finished speaking, they should mute their microphone and switch off the video. If during the debate councillor or officer would like to ask a question or raise a point, they are requested to use the chat function and to just write speakers a comment. Requests will be collated by the chairman and myself. I will also indicate in the chat when a new item has begun. Members are requested to indicate using the chat function if they are leaving the meeting. And finally, if any member loses connection during the meeting, it is recommended that they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided. I will now ask members and officers to confirm their presence when your name is called. Please just unmute your microphone and say present. Councillor Paul.
Present.
Councillor Stevens.
Present.
Councillor Bushell. Councillor Foster.
He's on the list as being there, Rachel, so.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Head.
Present.
Councillor Gamber Jones.
Roger has to switch his microphone on to be able to say yes.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Dr Mosley.
No, don't see him on the list.
Councillor Brerley.
Owen's here.
Yes, I'm here. Councillor Mosley is here, sorry, I'll miss you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Wright.
Present.
John Coates.
Present.
Matthew Mitchell.
Present.
Rachel Stamp.
Present.
Christian Allen.
Present.
Dee Bird.
Present.
Victoria Burgess.
Present.
David Steels.
Present.
Emily Spicer.
Present.
Ian Yates.
Present.
A D Selby.
Present.
Phil Drury? No, I don't think he's here. Is there anyone else in attendance who's not had their name called?
Yes, Charlotte Payne.
Oh, look, sorry, Charlotte.
Yes, Neil McBride as well from Lincolnshire County Council.
Thank you, Neil. Right, now we move to agenda item one, election of chairman. And I would now like to invite nominations for the position of chairman for the year 2020-2021. Are there any nominations?
Nominate councillor Paul, please.
Thank you. Is there a second there?
Secondary.
Thank you. Can I now ask all councillors to turn on their cameras? And if officers could switch off their cameras and ask all those in favour to raise your hand so that I can see. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. I think that's carried. Councillor Paul, over to you.
You should have asked me if I was willing to accept the nomination. I might change my mind. Now, that's very kind. Thank you very much. I'm happy to continue and I guess to the next item on the agenda. Thanks all very much for your confidence and your support over the last couple of three years. It's been good fun. Let's hope we can have another good year. So the next one is the election of vice chairman. So we need nominations for a vice chairman for the forthcoming year. Are you willing to carry on, Roger?
Only if I can work the microphone. Yes, you'd be happy to if the partnership is happy with that.
It's up to the partnership to second or propose an alternative nomination, so. It's going to take a long old time, isn't it?
I'm up at your seconds.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? If not, we'll take this as carried, I think. Otherwise, we'll be here this afternoon. No further nominations received, Rachel. I guess that's carried.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any apologies for absence, Rachel, please?
I haven't received any apologies, chairman.
Okay. In that case, we'll move swiftly on to the partner updates. Who would like to be first? Ian.
Sorry, chairman, we've got minutes of the previous meeting first.
Well.
We have, item five.
There's trouble trying to work off two devices, isn't it? And now we're giving Ian warning of what he's going to be first up. He's going to be busily preparing notes. Has everybody read the minutes and do they agree that they are a reasonably accurate record of what we did last time round?
Yes.
Yeah. In that case, we have to do this thing again where we switch off our cameras and all our ends up.
Councillor Head would like to speak.
All right.
Thank you, chairman. I've got two small points on the minutes. On the apologies, I'm listed as being in East Lindsay. Last time I looked, I was a member for North Castravon District Council.
We're not proud.
That's on page three of the agenda. And a small typo on page 10. If I can just scroll up to that. Which, in the minutes where it says that the item was resolved at the top of page 10, it says it's typed as the report presented by noted. I think that should be be noted.
Thank you.
I'm happy with the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. In which case, we will now move to item six, partner updates. If everybody's agreed that those minutes are happy. Rachel, can we do this by exception rather than by raw?
We can. Yes, we can.
In that case, I'll pause for a few seconds to give anybody a chance to object further. Otherwise, we'll take this as being carried and accepted. I see no messages, as the main to paraphrase. So we'll move on to item whatever it is and deal with the partner updates. And Ian, if you could lead off on that, please, it'd be much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks for the heads up. Just generally, and you're going to get, obviously, I won't go on about the Covid situation because that will be covered in some of the items later on. But just generally getting back to sort of like normal in terms of staffing requirements after people have been self-isolation, et cetera. But and very much making sure that those contingency plans are in place because we don't want to get lulled into a false sense of security. So that's in terms of whether we have any Covid-19 issues locally. A hell of a lot of work's gone into that. And moving on, green waste has continued. There's very, very high demand for the green waste service. And I think we've had something like a thousand new customers during this period. So a lot of effort's been going into maintaining all the services and we have been able to maintain them. But it has been, it has been a tough call. We've also locally taken the decision, as you'll be aware, to support the ongoing provision of the food waste service that we provide to approximately 4,000 customers. So the additional funding's been identified and allocated at South Castravon to continue with those collection costs. And hopefully, we're working closely with yourselves, the partners and the AD plant to secure a longer term provision going forward. We'll be reviewing that in the autumn. So that's good news for those customers that have really bought into it. And we're hoping that we can keep working on that to make it sustainable. Very, very pleased with the decision on the MDR contract because with being able to use the Deepin's transfer station for South Castravon in our 365 square miles, just having the one transfer station in the area is problematic in the north. So being able to tip at Deepin still removes what would have been a significant logistical problem. And then just finally, we are working closely with the county council and other colleagues on the one public estate, which is mainly about depot provision and waste facilities. And that work, whilst it stalled a little bit during the Covid situation, we are very actively back up and running and having meetings to progress that. That's the update from South Castravon.
Thanks, Ian. Excuse me, yeah, it was probably, I should have said at the beginning, yeah. On behalf of not only the partnership or county council, but actually the people in Lincolnshire, all the people in Lincolnshire. Thank you all for your efforts, for the joint work that went on to make sure that the service level was maintained as close to normal as possible. I think it was tremendous effort and the fact that we've managed to keep our services running and get our household waste recycling centres back on stream without the enormous problems colleagues around the country face. Just some indication of the proper working partnership that we have here in Lincolnshire. And I thank you all for the parts you've played in it. And I think it's well done to everybody. Next partner, please. Who would like to volunteer? No volunteers are coming forward. I guess it will be you, Christian. Please, tell us all about your stuff, what's going on in Boston.
Thanks, Eddie. Appreciated. Yeah, just before I start on a Boston update, I'd just like to give a vote of thanks really to David Steele at North Castravon District Council. David has been chairing the Strategic Officer Working Group now for 18 months, including through this pandemic. And David, I think all of the officers around the virtual table today will agree that David has done an absolutely fantastic job of chair over the last 18 months. And he has now stood down and deservedly now taken a bit more of a back seat in the officer working group and has now handed over the reins to me. So I'm now chair of the Strategic Officer Working Group and Victoria Burgess is my vice chair. But really, it's just to say thank you very much, David. It's really been appreciated and particularly your commitment through the pandemic, I think, has helped hold everything together in partnership. So thank you for that.
Christian, but you do realise you're on the line now, don't you?
Yeah, thanks, Eddie, yeah. No pressure. Just really to echo your comments, chair. I'm delighted to say that in Boston, we managed to maintain our waste collection services throughout the pandemic without interruption. And I'm extremely grateful to the staff that provide those services and also to the commitment from the partnership in making sure that those services could continue uninterrupted but as safely as was absolutely possible. And that, again, could not be achieved without us all working together on safe working practices in a very quickly evolving situation and making sure that our staff are safe and that all of our bins have been collected. And that's a real testament to the work of the partnership. We're all seeing huge volumes of waste at the moment. We're just trying to understand that and you'll hear more about that in reports later. But I know at Boston, we are collecting each month the equivalent of an extra week's worth of residual waste. So we hope that that will start to subside over time. But at the moment, it's a significant impact for us. And I think that's replicated across the partnership. Another area we're seeing significant change is in fly tipping. And this has been all over the press recently and it's something that we've discussed regularly in this forum. But in the three months last year, April, May and June, the amount of fly tipping we've seen in the Boston area has doubled in those three months compared to 2019 and 2020. And in June alone, we've seen a quadrupling of the number of fly tipping we experienced in the same month last year. And again, this is replicated across the partnership. And I think needs to be a priority for us going forwards into next year that we tackle this. And just one other issue at Boston, we are working hard on re-procuring our vehicle maintenance contract. That's taken up a significant amount of time negotiating that contract with potential providers and also looking at other options in the event that those negotiations don't pan out. And finally, chairman, I would just like to mention the Boston Alternative Energy Facility. We had a presentation last year from Gary Bauer, who works, who's a lead project manager for Royal Haskening last year about this gasification facility on the banks of the Haven in Boston. Well, that's now back on the agenda. It's been paused like a lot of things because of Covid. But it is now back on the agenda, but it is no longer gasification technology. It is an energy from waste proposal now, more conventional technology, but using the same amount of residual waste in terms of its throughput. So it's a massive facility, 1.3 million tonnes per annum that it will process. So you will see over the coming weeks, public consultations start on that again. Gary will be presenting to the scrutiny committee at Boston Borough Council in August. And we will be feeding back as a councillor to that public consultation as part of that scrutiny process. So that's just a heads up and I'm happy to share any further information that any of the members around the partnership may wish to have about the Boston Alternative Energy Facility. Thank you very much, chair.
No, thanks, Christian. Yeah, I mean, it's a massive proposal. That seems, I think, the only benefit I can see for that for you guys is some business rating, John Chris. Just taking care of it from everywhere else and to feed a plant that size. I guess the Haven's going to be fairly busy, which will be interesting. I know there's an item on the paper card coming up, so we'll leave details on that to then, if that's okay with you. But it's this fly tipping stuff. I just wanted to, yeah, it's kind of a general question on the back of what Christian said about the increase in fly tipping. Do any of you guys out there have any idea of the costs of the clearing up? And do you get any hazardous materials in the fly tips? So, you know, if the rest of the partnership updates, you could let us know. That would be, I'd be pleased. But Chris, if you've got anything on that, anything further?
Well, we are investigating the costs of this. Obviously, there's mechanisms for us to do that. The sort of ways we're seeing tends to be in terms of volume, sort of van loads and car bootloads. We are seeing plenty of black bag waste, but we're also seeing increases really across the board in terms of building waste, white goods, mattresses. Quite a broad sector of materials. It's increasing across the board and I think we need to, as a partnership, get under the skin of that and sort of start to understand it and see what interventions we can put in place to try and tackle it because the cost will be significant on the public purse of Lincolnshire.
Yeah, quite so. Yeah, thanks, Christian. I need to move on a bit here because I think I've got a couple of questions in. People would like to ask you questions. Richard Wright, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Christian, just a quickie with, you said regards to how much extra waste is being collected at the moment. I mean, there's a lot of people surmising that that's because people are at home. Has there been any questions asked of the commercial operators to see if that's correlated? Are they seeing a downturn? Because obviously, they pick up the majority from the workplaces. So are they seeing less or are they seeing equal or more? You know, to try and determine whether we are actually generating more waste or it's just shifted in its direction for collection.
I think that's a really interesting question, Richard. And it's one that we are currently investigating as a partnership. Obviously, there's a lot that has gone on in the last three months in terms of the pandemic. Also, the HWRC has been closed and now reopening, but reopening in a different way. Also, as you mentioned, lots more people working at home. There's a lot of sort of complex information, I think, that sits behind all this that we need to really start to understand and investigate. I think what we're seeing in terms of fly tipping is the beginning of a really ugly trend. And whilst I'm not clear yet whether that is an increase in waste overall, we're certainly seeing a significant shift in the waste volumes between various waste streams, be that curbside, be that HWRC or be that sort of fly tipping. So it's not sure whether it's a volume thing or whether it's just a waste, the same amount of waste that's moving between streams. And that's what we really need to understand.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. I think, is there anything else you want to come back on then, Richard?
This might be time, Eddie, because I was going to do this under partnership updates along with David. But a couple of things, well, three things really, I'd like to ask the partnership for today. And that's in the form of support. Obviously, the fly tipping is a huge, great issue at the moment. It's disgraceful, the amount that's being dumped, where it's being dumped, that the problem it causes on the public purse and on the landowners. And, you know, it's just getting out of hand. So the three things I'd like to ask the partnership is if, one, all members can take away that we need to beef up the comms on this, you know, using social media. I'm trying to put the message out that a cheap deal is a dodgy deal. People offering to take your waste away on the cheap, it means it's going to cost us all in the long term because there's no such thing as a cheap deal, as we know. The second one is could the partnership petition government with regards to stiffer penalties? At the moment, I think a lot of them are just laughing at the level of penalty, at the amount of money they can make, especially on some of these commercial dumps that they're doing. They must be making an absolute fortune out of it and they're running the risk of what is the penalty if they get caught? So I think they need to look at sentencing guidelines with regards to dealing with fly tipping as a serious crime. And the third one would be, can we liaise with highways and the districts where need be with regards to a piece of work on looking at entry and egress from sites off the highway system? Because especially with the commercial dumps, they obviously know which roads to use. They know where the weak points are for tipping without being seen. And whether it's an education programme with farmers and landowners or it's something that highways can do with regards to blocking entry points, then perhaps we need to do this now rather than later to stop this getting out of control. Thank you.
Yeah. From my point of view, I'd say yes to all those things. I think that it's something we do need to do. We do need a coordinated approach to this. And seeing that this is for public consumption, I think it's really important for me. So I was going to leave it to the partnership updates. But this business is about fly tipping. People are saying we need to have the household waste recycling centres open longer to prevent fly tipping. But let me tell you, in all the time we've been open, not one of our sites has ever been fully booked or even closed too. There's always been, the bare minimum has been a 20% mark. So there's always plenty of space for people who want to come and dispose of their rubbish in the proper ways. I know you couldn't do everything at the beginning, but we've worked really hard to make sure that happens now. And it seems to me that most of these fly tipping are being done by irresponsible traders. And I use that word advisedly, inverted commas and all that sort of stuff because they're just ripping folks off. If you go on Facebook, you can see them advertising tip runs 15 quid a throw. You give them a few quid and they'll take your stuff away. If they can't get into the tip, it ends up in the dyke. And the public need to realise that if their waste ends up in the inappropriate place, no matter who took it, they are still responsible for it. And you're absolutely right, we need to lobby government to make the fines higher. We need to do more enforcement and we need to work together to try and stamp this out. This has nothing to do with anybody with a brain would not do that. It's just irresponsible, illegal and a real health hazard. And I think it's a disgusting process, a criminal behaviour and we need to stamp on it really, really hard. This is not the fault of the local authorities in any way, shape or form. This is irresponsible people just ignoring the rules and just doing what they like. They can't be allowed to get away with it. End of rant. What else have I got here? Oh, A D, please, you wanted to say something? A D? Yeah, here he comes.
Thanks, yeah. Just to add to the debate really, there is a national algorithm when we report for a fly capture which works. Your costs out. As for instance, ours is significantly up this year. So it's saying we spent £76,000 on clearing fly tipping in this financial year as opposed to £55,000 completely last year. So that gives you some idea. They have to be taken with a pinch of salt because it does presume that each time there's a report, you send the lorry out to go and get it and there is specific fly tipping crews, whereas most of us combine those operations with other street cleansing work. So it has to be taken with a pinch of salt, but it does give us a bit of a benchmark, I think. Also, there is mention of trade waste as well. All I can say with ours is, as one of the authorities, it does collect trade waste. Ours is significantly down, although it is starting to recover now. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, A D, thanks for that. Again, via the household waste recycling centres, I can tell that one of the contractors there who also operates a commercial tip has noticed the quantity of commercial has gone up enormously. That's not necessarily because people aren't working. It's more that we are not allowing or we have managed to prevent traders dumping commercial waste in the household waste recycling centres, which of course is illegal. I mean, so there's been a real turnaround in that. And I guess it's one of the reasons why we've got some space at the household waste recycling centres because the traders aren't coming in, they aren't filling up the bins for free and they are using commercial outlets, some of them. The responsible ones are using the commercial outlets, the irresponsible ones are just chucking them in the dyke. So I keep trying to keep off this ranting business, really getting on my nerves. Anybody else wish to speak on this subject before we move on to the next partnership update, which can be from Victoria? If you're ready, please, Victoria.
I think Councillor Gamber Jones has got his hand up.
Yes, he has.
You're right.
Yeah.
Well done, thank you very much. I was looking down the chat line and he's not in the chat. He's just on the wave map from the far left of my screen. But there you go. Should I let him speak? What do you think? Yeah, go on then, Roger.
It's just a quick reference, isn't it? It does tend to open a can of worms, but one has to have some sympathy with our farming community in the fact that they are left to fight this battle on their own. They can't plug up every gap in the land that they farm and deal with that in the way that you might or we might wish to see them deal with it because it causes them no end of problems to have massive concrete blocks in the way and such like to try and prevent those incursions. But once these people have blighted their land, they're left with the bill. And that bill is often running into the many thousands because what's dumped is the worst of the worst, the hazardous. And we keep hearing it often and on numerous occasions that they have all of this to deal with. And now, as I understand it, it's not just happening monthly. It's happening not just weekly, but sometimes actually daily that they are trying to deal with this stuff when they're already, in some cases, on the edge of financial ruin through various issues, not least of them Covid. And I really think it's time that there was some government assistance or some campaign to deal with that side of it that rooted some of the money that's available from the manufacturers, from whatever sources in the corp system, back to that side of. in the corp system, back to that side of the victims' side to assist the farming industry in dealing with these impacts. And we should lobby in that respect as well as all the others.
Yeah, thanks, Roger. I think it's a really good point. It springs to mind that these two that we've just had in the last week, those massive forty tonne fly tips. They must have come out of a bulk and there's no way on God's earth, that's a household of dumping rubbish in the dyke, is it? You know, those massive things on the same piece of land within a week. On earth, anybody is meant to be able to cope with that. And I think it's incumbent upon us all to do whatever we can to help make you boy out of that awful situation. So I guess there's something Chris, perhaps you could work out now that you're chair of the Strategic Officers Working Group. We need to work together to help clear that mess up. Now, Victoria, I gave you a bit of a heads up last time, so I hope you're ready.
Hello, yes, good morning, everyone. Yeah, update from East Lindsay. You will all recall from previous updates to the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership that East Lindsay purchased a new fleet of vehicles. We've put in new rounds and changed our working practices. And eighteen months ago, when we planned this, we inadvertently planned it for the peak week of the Covid pandemic. So that week was a very difficult time for East Lindsay. I think it is tantamount to the skill and many thanks to the staff for enabling us to completely change the service whilst we had all the pressures and the contingency arrangements in place for dealing with Covid. And I think what it also showed was how well the officers of the partnership have been working together through this time. And I think we can see that with the work of the operations group and also the health and safety group that certainly made that smoother from my perspective than it would have been had we all been working on our own. What we did when we rolled out the new rounds was took the opportunity to write to every household. So we sent them the new leaflet with the M D R information, now the new materials that we're collecting. And we also took the opportunity, councillor Foster wrote to them all, to remind everyone around contamination. And looking at the figures so far, hopefully that's working. But obviously, it's a small sample at the moment and it will take a longer time to work out if that's had much of an effect long term. But all positive at the moment. We're also working with the county council around the one public estate side of things. And in terms of fly tipping, we haven't seen the huge increases that the rest of the county has seen. So we're just looking at our data now to understand why it's not affected us as much. And in terms of day job, we're also just about to put a fleet maintenance contract out to tender. So all busy in East Lindsay.
Yeah, thanks, Victoria. I guess, I guess it was a busy day if you managed to hit the peak of Covid with your week in your, but who knew, eh? We all thought we were on for a fairly easy run. Anybody got any questions for Victoria or anything before we move on to my next victim? It will probably be Steve, I should think. Please, Steve, have you got anything for us?
Oh, yeah, thanks, thanks, Eddie. Yeah, just a few quick things and I won't labour repeating what others have already said. But in Lincoln, we have continued to collect pretty much throughout. And thanks to our private contractor for their sustained effort and liaison with others across Lincolnshire. We have, we're in the final stages of a contract extension currently with them. We're agreeing a contract extension which will take us through till August twenty sixth. So I was hoping to have got that concluded by now, but obviously a few things have got in the way. Two things I would comment on about the impact of the Covid period. First of all, there has been an impact on waste streams undoubtedly, and that term about waste streams keeps coming up. And the function of this group, or one of the functions of this group, to look at and assess what those impacts are. I hear what's been said about household waste recycling centres and the booking system and the fact that there's slots and so therefore that shouldn't necessarily be a barrier. However, it does appear to be a barrier in some respects somehow and for some reason. Because we've got a thousand extra green waste customers. So thank you for that. Whatever is happening at the household waste recycling centres has had a positive spin off for Lincoln in terms of green waste. I think that's been replicated elsewhere across the county. The last thing I was going to comment on is access. The increased number of people working from home is definitely having some problem, giving us some problems in terms of access in the city for collection rounds. We are trying to liaise with county highways and having a patchy response, shall we say, in terms of enforcement on streets and double yellow lines. So if there is a discussion taking place with county highways about fly tipping issues, as was mentioned earlier on, then perhaps we could hook in some of the urban parking issues to that conversation, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, thanks for that, Steve. And always pleased to help if we can. But I think the comments around green waste, we opened up the green waste first because, again, it was people staying at home. What are they going to do? They're going to get out and garden, they're going to do some DIY. And we could take the wood and we could take the green waste first off. So, yeah, that's, that's the way we opened up. One of the questions I was going to ask was of all of you, exactly that question about green waste and other collection items, because, you know, the guidance is really quite clear that the household waste recycling centres should be the facility of last resort. And you should make this use of all the available curbside collections that are out there. Pardon me, and I know that they're charged for it. But if you think about how little the charge is in comparison with a trip to the tip every week, they're really good value for money. So I would hope that your usage across the county of the green waste collections has gone up. And I think that's the right way to do it. It's more economical for folks and it's more environmentally friendly if we have one lorry going around collecting from a thousand households rather than having a thousand cars driving the tip to chuck it. So it's a much better way around it, it should be. I think, Aidy, we've had a little bit in from you, but could you give us a bit of a partnership update? Is there anything else to say? If you've covered it all, I'll understand, but.
No, I'll do a bit more, Chair, thank you. So as with others, the fleet maintenance contract sort of came to an end. We put a pay as you go contract in place, a sort of one plus one with our existing contractor. And so far, that's working really well for us. We are fortunate to have a fleet manager who liaises really well with that contract. So it's looking like it'll be a positive move for us. As with others, green waste is up on last year. More people at home, obviously, you know, obviously working from home and taking more care of their environment, of the sort of garden and that local environment. So that's really positive for us and for the H W R Cs, I guess, as well. New depot has now fulfilled its planning conditions and we are expecting to start on site in September. So that's really good. Build time's just under a year if everything goes well. Covid response, apart from bulky closing for a week, everything ran as normal. We did have a couple of extra crews on to help with the increase in residual waste. I think that's been experienced elsewhere. Fly tipping, we've talked about that. Our experience is that it went up between three and five hundred percent, depending on which month you looked at. So probably similar experience to everybody else. Just one other thing, tackling climate change remains a key priority for West Lindsay. And that's very much linked to the waste agenda as well. And to this end, there's a consultation document live now on our website. And we'll be on there until mid-August and the results of which will help inform a future climate change strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Aidy, it's, yeah, the update, this cool stuff. It seems to be the constant message is this fly tipping has been that really big change we've noticed throughout this pandemic where people are staying at home, which is really weird because you'd have thought less vehicles on the road, people would be much more disinclined to try fly tipping because they're going to be that much more noticeable. But it doesn't seem to have been the case because there just ain't been a number of people out there seeing them. So maybe we'll win some, lose some. Excuse me, I thought it was not in good condition apparently. Who have I missed out so far? Charlotte, sweet Charlotte is in there somewhere, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you. So we brought our fleet in-house from the first of April and that's going really well. Similarly, obviously, we've been part of the paper and card trial, which has been good also. Throughout Covid, similarly, we had to make changes to our crews. So the working practices of working four days changed five days so that we could create families alongside the wish guidance. And as everybody else has mentioned, there was additional hundreds of tons of extra waste that we collected. And we managed to maintain all of our services throughout the pandemic. With fly tipping and actually our bulky waste collections have increased by seventy two percent as well. We contacted residents about changes to bank holiday collections and took that opportunity to remind them all of what should be going in their recycling. And one of the really important things that we're working on at the moment, I'm quite pleased to be part of the district council's network working with DEFRA on the resources and waste strategy in the environment bill. And then the last few weeks that started again and it's really good to have some representation of Lincolnshire around the table discussing those as well.
Thanks, Charlotte. It's not, from my point of view, it's good to have somebody sensible representing Lincolnshire around the table in the government circles, which is not always the case at all, is it? But who have I, I must have missed somebody. I think I've just missed Lincolnshire County Council and the former chairman of the Strategic Officers Working Group, it could be David Steele.
If I can get my microphone to work. Yeah, good morning, everybody, good morning, Chairman.
That's a nice address you've got there, David, I have to say.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a very similar picture in Northcote Stephen as to what my colleagues have mentioned. We bought our maintenance crews in-house at the beginning of April and that's working out very well for us. And they're very much enjoying being part of the NK family. We've also looked at renewing contracts and interim arrangement with regards to grounds maintenance and reviewing our street sweeping contracts and arrangements. We've also been part of the paper and card trial, more of that later on in the meeting. I would also like to reiterate what has been said before with regards to fly tipping. Last year, between April and June, we had hundred and seventy three fly tips. In the same period this year, three hundred and eight. So that's almost a doubling in Northcote Stephen as well as some of the really big fly tips as well. I'd like to thank Christian for the devoted thanks. I've very much enjoyed being chairman of the Strategic Officers Group for the past year and a bit. And I'd like to thank my colleagues in the partnership because it's actually been quite an easy job because we've all worked really well together, especially since March. And especially I'd like to thank them for the very big surprise of the bottles of wine that they sent through to me as well. Even better in this lockdown period because obviously I can't share them. So good news from that point of view. That's it from me and from Northcote Stephen.
That explains the rosy cheeks and the happy grin then, David.
Absolutely.
That's cool. I guess, thanks for that, Dave. And again, I'm thankful that the effort you've put in, I'm sure Christian will carry on the good work that you've all been doing. And you think, you look around at the success we've had within this partnership and the level of cooperation that exists. You just wonder why somebody would want to rock the boat and go for devolution. But this is a non-political organisation, so I'm not making any comment. Lincolnshire County Council, is it? Which one of you is going to take this on?
That'll be me, Eddie.
Oh, well, someone drew the short straw and it was you then, wasn't it, John?
It certainly was, yeah. So thank you very much. It's starting to feel like Eurovision with all this going around, all the different member countries of the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership.
Yeah, but nobody's got Neil Plough, have they?
I was just thinking of the signing off from the different councils. So here in Lincolnshire, obviously the Covid nineteen pandemic, we managed to keep all the transfer stations open by redeploying county staff into them. So we maintain the operational support for the districts and their collections. We did close the recycling centre sites until the government guidance changed to permit them to reopen. We're progressing the capital projects on the two replacement recycling centres for Kirkby-on-Pain and for Skegness. We completed the procurement of the county's dry recycling contract for the treatment and processing of the dry recycling. That's covered in agenda item ten later on. We undertook the compilation of the draft annual report. That's been completed and that's presented to the partnership today. And we are also undertaking the drafting of a model TIP assessment, which will underpin the increase in paper and card collections across the county. We are collecting data, undertaking analysis to ascertain changes in collected tonnages during lockdown. And we're reporting that through into the Strategic Officer Working Group. And we're planning a ten-year transformation and improvement plan for county services to provide for the extra seventy thousand houses by twenty thirty six that are planned. The changes to the waste streams that are due to the government policies and the recycling and waste strategy. So deposit returns schemes, extended producer responsibility, separated food waste collections, garden waste collections, twin stream dry recycling and the infrastructure that's going to be necessary to deal with these. So this work will identify predicted tonnages for each waste and recycling material stream and where and when interventions need to be made to control costs, realise savings and maximise income. We're also in discussions with DEFRA about their ongoing, about possibilities to work with them and to go early on some of the policy changes that will be brought about when the legislation is enabled to implement the raw recycling and waste strategy policies. So that's what's been happening here in Lincolnshire.
Thanks, John. That was a swift counter through the stuff that's been going on. Has anybody got, has anybody got any questions for John, please? Anything you've heard? Things stunned them into silence, mate. Right, so we'll move, as I move down the chat list, it seems councillor May is going to leave and has asked his support, or he's passed on his support for fly tipping initiatives. But it suggests the booking requirement for use of the tips, I guess is what he means. And it may be impacting on people. But all I can say, if you're so trying to pick any words carefully, I don't want to get myself into trouble. If you're so irresponsible, the effort of making an appointment is going to turn you from a decent, corroboration person who disposes of their rubbish sentiment in a sort of low life that tips into a dyke, then I think, you know, it's just beyond belief. And as I said, none of the household waste recycling centres have been at anything like capacity. There was plenty of spare capacity around. So use the booking system, get yourself an appointment and dispose of your refuse properly. If there are no further comments on that.
So councillor Wright would like to speak, Chairman.
What's that, Rachel?
Councillor Wright has indicated to speak. And councillor Brilly as well now.
Yeah, yeah, they're on the list.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. I'd like to back you on that. I think it's wrong to say the booking system has turned people into criminals. I mean, it takes, it takes a couple of minutes. I've used the system three times. I know people that have used the booking system. They all prefer it because the experience of going to the household waste recycling centres now is so much improved. To say that booking would deter people, it's a lot better to have a slot where you just drive in and can easily use the centre rather than the senseless queues there used to be with everybody trying to fight for a space to pull up to the particular bin they wanted to deposit whatever they were taking. It's vastly improved, it's a much better system. And I just think what's actually happened is whilst people have had nothing to do, it's encouraged more people to actually become illegal fly tippers, especially the ones, the people with the vehicles, the people that are advertising on Facebook or responding to Facebook and other social media, I should add. That's what's really happened here. But I can't say that the amount of increase in fly tipping can be blamed on the booking system when it's actually a much better system and I hope it's going to remain in place permanently.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Richard. It's nice to know there's at least another sensible man in the country. Not that, not that I was thinking I was the first, I have to say. If I was that sensible, I wouldn't be doing this. But you're absolutely right, there's no excuse for it at all, under any circumstance. And particularly when we're in the middle of a public health pandemic. And particularly when we're in the middle of a public health pandemic. To go out there and perform an operation that's going to lead to further health, it's just irresponsible beyond belief. I mean, I just don't understand people. But thanks for the support on that. And you're right about the atmosphere of the tips. As you're listening from Facebook and stuff, you know, I've been round about all the sites visiting and seeing how operations are going. The huge majority of customers are just so much happier being on site, they're not being rushed, they're not being pushed. You know, they're not in physical contact with other people, they're not having to fight for space. They can deal with the disposal of their refuse in a proper and orderly fashion and they really are so appreciative. And the problem we've got is the staff, that stood there wanting to help folks get rid of their rubbish like they used to do. Yeah. It was always a norm. If you drew up and you had a lot or you were a bit on the elderly side or a bit infirm, they'd help you. Now, they can't do that now. And the frustration is plain to see if you go and see them. They don't like standing there with their arms folded watching folks struggle. And I have to say, on occasion where people really have been struggling, they've used their discretion and done the sensible thing and asked the people to put the rubbish on the floor, leave it where it is and drive away. They've then gone and disinfected it, left it, whenever they felt it was safe to do so, they disposed of it properly. And I think that's the sort of attitude we've come to expect from our staff and that's the attitude that they've shown all the way through. I think they should be commended for it. Visiting the household waste recycling centres, as they said, it's almost a pleasure trip. And I have to say, for a lot of folk, it was the first time they came out and they'd be just so pleased to see people out there doing stuff and behaving sensibly. It was really, really good. But I have a question from Owen, please.
Thanks very much, Chairman. It's just a point related to the discussion on fly tipping and the correct disposal of waste. Because the area that I represent is quite a long way from the nearest Lincolnshire Household Waste Recycling Centre, which is the one at the Raisins. There are three nearer ones, Grimmsby, Imingham and Barnetby Top, which is Melton Ross. And in normal circumstances, residents are able to access those. Obviously, as part of the response to the coronavirus, there's a much greater level of challenge and people are being turned away because they're not residents of either north-east Lincolnshire or north Lincolnshire. As we go way further away from the immediate crisis, things may return to how they were before, but it's just an appeal really for the future. The common sense response to me seems that people should be able to use a household waste recycling centre, whether it's the nearest one or one provided by their own local authority. So if that could be borne in mind and if there was an opportunity to have that dialogue with the unitaries to our north, that would be greatly appreciated by the people I represent. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Owen. That's been a thorny problem we've been trying to deal with over many years. And one of the issues has been that we haven't operated the same level of restriction as those guys in the north. And if you, and I think Sean is down to speaking about a couple of people's time, so he'll probably be able to give you a bit more detail on that. But you can still use those tips in the north if you get a permit. That means you have to apply to the relevant local authority and ask for a permit and there will be a charge. And I think it's only fair that there's a charge because, you know, if you're using somebody else's society that you're not contributing to via the council tax, then you need to pay for that. And if you consider it to be financially more viable to use that tip rather than travel, both environmentally and economically, I think that would probably be the thing to do. But at the moment, it is not a free service. We have restricted our tips to Lincolnshire folks only.
Thank you very much. That's much appreciated. Because actually, we're talking about the people that intend to do the right thing and dispose of waste properly. So thank you very much for those comments.
You're welcome. After Owen, I have Ian, please. Ian Yates.
Yeah, I just want to say on the fly tipping issue, I don't, the thing, people trying to draw a link to the Household Waste Recycling Centre, my experience has been that it's entirely a behavioural issue. Those that want to drop litter, for example, will always drop litter. Those that don't will never do that. It's the same little bit with fly tipping. And some people can, my experience is people can live just around the corner from them and they can be open and they'll still fly tip if that's their mentality. And I'd just like to say, on a very positive note, I think the speed that you got up the booking system and the experience, because I've been three or four times, is absolutely fantastic. So I think everyone did very, very well to get that up in such a short time. Just wanted to make those comments.
Thanks, Ian. Appreciated. I have John Coates, then Roger Gamba-Jones and then Mervyn Head, so in that order, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to pick up on councillor White's comment. The booking system does enable us now to spot patterns of individual usage early on. And I think it was the market raisin site, we managed to identify a lady who was consistently coming in and when challenged, she admitted that she specifically bought a van, applied for a waste carrier's permit licence on the basis that she was going to advertise on Facebook and bring other people's waste into the sites. Because her level of usage was astronomical. So there is a change in behaviour out there, as I say, but we are now for the first time able to see how people are using the recycling centres, challenge them if we think they're being excessive, which of course means that there's more opportunity for genuine residents who just have a casual need to dispose of their excess waste to get on. And also, I think, to try and reassure partner members that we're looking to develop the system even further, improve it, make it a stricter process, a more automated process, give the residents more control over the process. And the flip side of that is that our view is that that will then enable us to better restrict commercial activity and redirect that into all the private company facilities and support the local economy. Thanks, Eddie.
Thanks, John. Roger, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. As an aside, the negative feedback I've received is invariably from those who've experienced sites in other authorities. The latest one was in reference to somebody who was clearing a house of a relative, deceased relative in County Durham. And apparently, they were able to telephone the local authority to be told, yes, it's fine. Bring your trailer, chuck it all on and come down whenever you like. And this is part of the problem to some extent. I'm not saying they're doing it right because they'll be suffering exactly what you've managed to eliminate for the most part, is the commercial waste coming in. And I think they will probably live to rue the day when they realise what's coming in and what their taxpayers are paying for. And they will no doubt change their system, but that is probably where a lot of any social media negativity is generated from. And what you've done, I believe, is the absolute right thing to do, without a doubt, on behalf of the taxpayers and it will pay dividends in the long run.
Yeah, thanks, Roger. And that's a good example to quote. And I promise he wasn't set up to say that. We operate that sort of system now. If people are in extenuating circumstances, you say, trying to clear a deceased site. If they telephone the office, then we sort them out and that's been done properly. We try to be as successful as possible, but making sure we're only open for genuine household need rather than fly-by-night traders who, like you say, you know, get a tranny van and take other people's stuff in. So we're on that and good one. Thanks very much. Mervyn, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Just thinking about the fly tipping issue. Obviously, you're never going to stop all of it. And I'm just wondering where we're concerned with builders and small building works dumping waste, whether there's a possibility of either introducing some kind of registration system for builders, small builders whereby they have to have a waste disposal statement, how they're going to get rid of it. Whether something can be done within the planning system whereby when applications go in for making extensions or converting garages or whatever, again, there has to be a statement of how the householder is going to dispose of the rubbish. It may be difficult to monitor these sort of things, but again, could we make more use with our communications and help and assistance from our parishes and town councils to monitor these sort of things? Because it does affect everybody and impact. And I just think we need to look at it slightly differently, maybe from the ground up and change the way that we look at this and hopefully catch more people. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mervyn. Yeah, it's a bit of an issue around rubble and that sort of stuff. And I did consider at one time, you know, charging people for the privilege, you think, well, but that's commercial activity, which I have no difficulty with. But it does seem to me to be unfairly competitive to private sector organisations that already offer that facility. You know, skip hire companies and commercial disposal points. But I think we finally took the decision to stick with what we'd done before, which is limit to private households to one dustbin full of rubble per vehicle. And the booking system as well is to see people who are taking advantage of that by coming two times a day, three times a day, two, three times a week. Your normal household does not produce that much waste that they need to come to the tip every day or every other day. We can keep a check on that sort of stuff and see if those people are taking advantage of a free service that we provide to, not allowed to be free, other than the council tax contribution of a service we provide to our residents and, you know, not taking unfair advantage of that place. So long may we carry on with that. Boston Borough Council's hands up. Is that you, Chris?
It is. Thank you, Chairman. I feel sort of partly responsible for this debate going on around fly tipping because it was me that mentioned it in the first place. Just to assure members of the partnership, a lot of the comments made are going to be really helpful for us in terms of developing action plans and initiatives and interventions to try and address this problem. It will be a partnership approach. It has to involve the Environment Agency, the police and a range of other agencies. But what I've heard today are some really good suggestions about things we can perhaps investigate as well as getting behind the numbers, which is a task that the Officer Working Group will take on. And you'll hear later on about how we're reshaping our action plan going forward as part of the sort of the other speakers' presentations. But rest assured, fly tipping will remain on the agenda of the SOWG and we will be picking it up in our action plan. And we will be looking into these interventions with some relish because we recognise that it's a real issue for all of us. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And don't worry about having brought it up because it was on my bit to do in our partnership update. Fly tipping has been on the increase. There's been lots of media reports. I get lots of comment about fly tipping that comes to me direct and you just have to deal with it. I think it's been a really interesting debate. And what we could do with that from SOWG is if you could please, Chris, play the costs and the tonnages and what's actually in it. I mean, I do get the feeling that, of course, hazardous waste is expensive to dispose of. We get a lot of it. Most of the fly tips I've seen that are littered around the company side have usually got a little bit of asbestos in here and a little bit of that. And the rest of it is just rubbish. But I still have two others. First of which is, if you'd like to come back, Chris, that's fine, then I'll, then councillor McNally and then we'll move on.
No, thank you, Chair. It's fine. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, but yeah, if you could take that one through the SOWG, I'd appreciate it. We could do with perhaps our next informal meeting if you could update us with the tonnages and costs and that. Thanks very much. So Danny, you had your end up.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for the Single Officer Working Group, would there be any benefit in having a sort of mutual application for people to report the fly tipping? So every district's working on the same principle. Everyone can see where it's being tipped and also allowing the public to access it. So they can, you know, they might be able to keep their eye on that particular area and spot anything that's going on. It's just some, it could be simple but quite effective.
Is there anything you want to say on that, Chris?
No, I mean, excellent suggestions. Again, I think we need to understand the data. We've already commissioned the Operational Officers Working Group to start to understand that. We have a good benchmark in terms of the fly capture information that AD referred to. That's a good starting point to make sure, first of all, we're reporting the information in the correct way and that we can start to analyse that data and then start to look at the most appropriate interventions that are going to deliver the biggest benefit to us. And a lot of those sort of interventions and ideas have been mentioned in the debate today. So we'll certainly take those away. But we need to understand what is going to deliver us the best bang for our buck in terms of what we do. So thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chris.
Has anybody else which is to comment on this fly tipping debate? If you've all spoken, put your hands down, please. But if there are fresh ones, and I guess I heard your voice, Roger, so I guess your hand being up is that you want to come back in.
Yeah, it's just reminded me that reference to builders being required to register. At the moment, the planning system requires, sorry, I'll switch the camera on. Builders are required on larger developments. Some of them are required to make an environmental impact assessment. And I believe it's that part of it that includes a statement about how they're going to dispose of their waste. Now, I can't remember the scale of it. It's not every major because a major can be ten dwellings and upwards and commercials are different again. There are thoughts amongst the government as we're leaving the, or we've left the EU, that those will be scrapped. It may be worth the Officer Working Group looking into that a bit deeper because the implications of that is that along with that will go that side of the planning system and all of those safeguards that exist currently. And along with that will be the opportunity for the cowboys and the criminal gangs to be operating. And the possibilities are endless for them to exploit that gap that currently exists in legislation and suchlike. It may be long term, but it could be there. So it's something else to keep an eye on. The smaller builders aren't required to do it and it may be something that is too much to consider for them. But just a point, okay?
Yeah, thanks, Roger. Danny?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. John, your hand's still up. Did you want to come back in?
Thanks, Eddie. Yeah, I think it's just to give some reassurance to the partnership about the actions that will be going forward under Christian's leadership. Obviously, we signed up to the scrap fly tipping campaign as a partnership. The toolkit that gives us the coordinated days of action that have already started to happen in West Lindsay. The ones that, Boston, were hit by the Covid crisis. So it's not, there's, there hasn't, there's been a degree of cessation, but we're still progressing ahead on many fronts. We've also got somebody in the Environment Agency who is a strategic We've also got somebody in the Environment Agency who is a strategic lead for environmental crime and the Chief Inspector for Rural Crime in Lincolnshire has also been in contact. So just like to reassure members, there's a coordinated effort going on. It might have, it might be behind the scenes and we haven't got anything to flag wave about yet, but the work is ongoing. As I say, the, I think I will put some blame down to the COVID pandemic delaying us in those actions and the plans we've got, but I'm sure they're going to bear fruit in the shortness of time. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Is it anybody else wish to comment on the, on the slide type of debate before we move on to the next item? I'm pausing to give you the chance to switch your mic on. It would appear not, in which case, thanks all very much. So thank you all very much for what is an interesting and informative debate and has given Christian and the rest of the officers, I'm sure, something to work on to get them forth to us next time. Now then, Dave, I see that you had done for these, this, I think, should wait, LWP operational response to COVID-19 with a PowerPoint presentation. And this has kind of gone on a bit longer than I was expecting. So is it possible just to talk without the presentation? Would that upset you? I don't want to, I don't want to steal your thunder, but.
No, I did, Chairman, I was planning on doing exactly that. I know that some of the people in this meeting have already seen this presentation. So in terms of the potted highlights, we've, as a partnership, I mentioned before, we've worked really well together to look towards making sure that we implement all the government guidance that was coming out with regards to waste. We had regular meetings, weekly meetings to be able to respond to any of the emerging issues. We made sure as a partnership that we put safety first, safety of the customers, safety of our staff. The good news is that the, the public responded and I'd like to take the opportunity to, to thank the public for putting in good words, especially for the waste collection and disposal infrastructure and the people that man that. I think that was a really big success. But there's been an awful lot of work to, to, to get to this position and to maintain our collection and, and disposal routes. And the great news that I would like to say is that during that period, apart from minor disruptions, then there wasn't anything significant, unlike other areas of the country, certainly in Lincolnshire, there wasn't anything significant. And certainly the, the partnership working and supporting each other really came to the fore since, since March. In terms of tonnages, what I'd also like to highlight is the fact that not only were we coping with the need to look towards maintaining the service and to make sure that we were COVID compliant, but also we've talked a lot about fly tips, but waste in general, there was marked increases in both residual recycling and green waste streams during that period. And therefore, we, we've had to respond to that and, and respond that we did in each of our areas. Victoria mentioned earlier as well, carrying out a review of the rounds as well. So, and, and all the other work that we've done, we've had additional impacts that we've needed to cope with. So looking forward, in a nutshell, we've, we've got plans in place, we've got good working relationships, we've got reporting systems through to the Recovery Partnership, which hopefully means, God forbid, if we do end up with a second wave, then we're in a better, better position now than we probably were back in March to be able to respond that. I would also like to point out as well that there are a number of things that we have done that won't change. You've mentioned already about the household waste recycling scheme bookings and how well that, that's gone. We've all now got COVID compliant depots and waste transfer stations and disposal sites. And that will continue for the future. And we are starting to now look forward to the next items on the agenda about delivering the strategy, in particular things such as the mixed dry recycling and paper and cards. I'll leave it there, Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, David. That's very, very understanding of you and give us a whiz through. I guess it would be an opportunity at this point to, just if we're going to keep operating in this, this fashion, that's acceptable. Then if we have presentations, which I don't want to prevent, don't get me wrong, if we do have presentations, perhaps it'd be useful if we could send those slides out electronically because I know members like to read through first and, and perhaps make notes on slides they, they want to speak to. We could arrange that for the future, that'd be great. But thanks for moving that along, Dave. And again, yeah, I, I don't really think the people, the public, general public realised just how difficult it was to maintain all those services across a county the size of Lincolnshire from so many disparate organisations. And I think we did exceptionally well and I think you guys did a brilliant job. So thanks for everybody concerned and that's from everybody who works on the vehicles all the way through to the office. It's been a really great coordinated effort and people should be very appreciative. And I have to say, I think in the most part, people have been appreciative. They, they know how important these services are to them and the fact that they were still out there just gave everybody a feeling, yeah, times are tough, but it weren't that way because we're still having the bins emptied and the guys are still out there waiting. Absolutely spectacular performance. We move on to, oh, why blimey, LW, LWP Annual Report, that must be you, Matthew.
It is, yes, thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can see me. I've got some slides to share, but they're basically summarising what's already gone out in the Agenda Pack. As hopefully everyone's aware, there are, there are actually two versions of the Annual Report. And just to be clear, I'll go over which version is which and why there are two separate versions in a moment. And both versions have actually already been circulated in full around the Strategic Officer Group several times and hopefully all members have had a chance to see them as well. So I'm hoping that we've reached the point where there should be no further comments, but I'm happy to receive any comments and we can make any last minute tweaks that anyone would like to make. But the recommendation now is that the two documents are ready to go out and be published for the public. So just to go through some slides, can, can you just confirm, Chair, you can see the slides that put up on the screen? Yes, hopefully you can. I can't hear you, but so basically the annual report, there are two separate documents, as I've said, one of which is a public facing, hopefully easy to read version with plenty of pictures and lots of information that hopefully makes it a reasonable read for the public to know what we're working on. The second version is an LWP facing version, that's for yourselves as a partnership, but also is for elected members around the partnership authorities to give them a clearer view of what actually has been happening in the partnership for the, the 12 months from April 2019 to March 2020. The recommendation is that both of these reports are now at a stage where they can, they can go and be published on the, it'll actually be hosted on the LWP page of the LCC website so that everybody can see both the documents and get full access to them. I'll just run through very quickly what's in the public facing version of the document. The front cover obviously is a nice picture of Lincolnshire. We've then got an introduction which councillor Paul has approved saying what we, what we've been up to in the last year and some of the things affecting us as a partnership. We've then got a page about the waste strategy and how we're working together and what we do, what we do together as a partnership. And the theme, basically, you'll see each, each pair of pages, there's a page with text and a page with, that's mainly a picture of something relating to that, that page. The next page is about operational projects that we're doing, including the paper and cards trial. The next page is about communications and engagement and various campaigns that we're involved in. And there's a diagram there of showing where the waste actually goes, nice infographic for people. The next page is about assets and infrastructure, some of the facilities that are run by the partnership and on behalf of the partnership and how we process the waste. The next page is about performance and government, governance, about the partnership meeting together and also about some of the statistics that we keep and why we keep them. And there's a nice picture there of the millionth tonne that's gone through the HWR, sorry, the EFW this year. Then there's a page about what happens next, about how we're continuing to work together and responding to developing national policy. For instance, the resources and waste strategy that's shown opposite it. And then there's the contact details if anybody wants any further information, including a link to the webpage where the full version, the longer version of the report will be. So that's a whistle stop tour of the, of that page, of that document. The next one, we've got the, the LWP facing version, which as I say, is aimed largely at members and officers within the partnership authorities. That includes an introduction, brief history of the LWP, some of the current issues like the national strategy and things that are coming up, what currently happens to our waste and the current services, the strategic objectives which are listed in the waste strategy, the action plan for progress and what we're doing going forwards, how we're measuring performance, including the KPIs, which I'll give a quick separate report on later in this meeting. And then what we're doing next. And there's also a glossary of terms for where we've used initials and technical terms within the document. And that was a brief whistle stop tour of the two documents. And if anybody has any points or questions they'd like to make at this point, then now would be a good time and we can look to make any tweaks anyone would like to have. Otherwise, I'm hoping that the partnership will approve both those reports as being ready to publish. Thank you.
Thanks, Mervyn. Thanks, Matthew. That, that was a really good whistle stop tour through the, the two reports, slides on the screen, it was great everybody see. And the reason I called you Merv is because I have Merv and Dan to speak. Sorry about that. Merv, if you'd like to ask Matthew a question, please.
Thank you, Jim. No, it, it was not a question really. I thought it was a very, very good report and I would just like to highlight objectives nine and 10 so that the, the public can be assured that we are a very, very forward looking partnership and always looking for innovations and different ways in which we can do things to improve the way that we recycle our waste. Generally, I think it's an excellent report and I'm more than happy to, to support it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for that, Mervyn. Owen has moved the recommendation, so I'll take your support as being the second if that's okay with you. And yes, I think you're absolutely right. Forward looking is the way we need to be. And one thing, this, the booking system and the changes to the HWRC operation has allowed us to do is to see how we can improve recycling rates by allowing people more time on site. And then in, as I said, in mass, we are, I'm sure we will find as things progress that we are getting a better level of recycling coming through there because they had more time to deposit stuff in the right bin rather than just chucking it in the black bag and lobbing it in the EFW bin. So we're, we're, we're really looking forward to making some significant improvements to recycling rates by that way. Councillor Gamber Jones, please.
It's a good looking document. I, I'd be interested to know how we intend to distribute it to make sure it gets to as wide a public as possible. Although they all like having their bins emptied, beyond that, I'm not sure how interested they'd be, be in it past that, that basic comfort of seeing their rubbish disappear if we don't choose the right outlets. Hopefully, schools would be interested in receiving a copy of it for the right reasons, particularly the recycling message. And the other, other point, of course, is at least some attempt to communicate with our non-English speaking side of our communities. I know that might not be as important in the, the northern reaches, but certainly down here in the south of the county, it's a significant issue and it's one of the areas where we probably find it the most difficult to, to communicate some of these messages with that population. Even though their next generation are clearly the English speakers and the ones in the schools and hopefully educating others to become like minded. So just those questions on that one, please.
Yeah, thanks, big comments, Roger. And just to, so you are assured they do provide a special copy just for me. Matthew, have you got anything you want to come back on?
Those are certainly good points in terms of publicity. I think it's always been an issue that it's very easy for us to, to produce documents that we like and that we're happy with. We like looking at ourselves. It's always been a question of how do you actually get the public to see what we want to say and to be interested in what we have to say to them. It's something I think we need to look at. I can talk to our communications colleagues and maybe try to, to find better ways to get it out there. One issue we've had in the past is in terms of producing actual hard, physical copies, there's been a reluctance to spend money on producing hard copies that might not actually be read, but I suppose that's a, a bit of a chicken and egg situation because if you don't produce hard copies, nobody can read the hard copy. But yes, it's a, it's a tricky one, but we will, we will try to, to endeavour that as many people as possible see, see what we have to say.
Yeah, thank you, Matthew. I think the comments about trying to get this into schools, particularly around the recycling, is, is something we've been talking about for a while. And I see Rachel's got her hand up, so I'm sure she'll be able to tell us a bit more about that. But certainly educating the younger folks is definitely the way to drive up the recycling rates and get that performance all round. They're the ones who convince their parents to do the right things, aren't they? So Rachel, you had something further to say on that, I would guess?
Yeah, and it was really to answer that question around communications. And as Matthew said, working with our communications colleagues, I think what we've learnt particularly over the pandemic is there's been very good joint working of all the communications leads across the partnership. So we will be going out and promoting that through our social media and our websites and putting the relevant links. We'll look further into the language issues and what we need to do to make sure that it's fully accessible. But going forward and within the report itself is detailed, the action plan and how we're going to continue to deliver that through the year. One of those items is that we will be engaging and looking to create the schools programme and develop that. We've certainly worked through the trial of paper and card, which I'll come on to as the next item with some of the schools and that's been really well received. So again, it's about taking that message and make it further. But the communications teams are aware that once this report's been adopted, they'll be helping us promote it and put those messages out consistently across the whole county. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Roger. Are you going to leave comments on waste by the sea until the paper and card trial?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Roger's hand's gone down, so I guess that's okay. So it's AD, please.
Thank you, Chair. Before COVID kicked off, our members dedicated some budget to doing a recycling and waste awareness campaign in all our primary schools. So there's definitely a link there, isn't there? We haven't had time to sort of look at what we would deliver in those schools, but it would seem that this document will be a useful sort of starting point and we'll, we'll make those links with, with Matthew and Rachel about how we, how we go about delivering that.
Okay, thanks very much. Anybody else got any questions for Matthew or comments they want to make on the, on the report? Nothing's come through, so I guess, Matthew, your work here is done. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation and for taking this. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation and for taking this stuff on.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be back later for another item, I'm afraid.
Oh, never see enough of you, Matthew. You're not a regular, I know, but thanks very much for that. So we'll move on to the oh, no, we need to have a vote on this, on the annual report. So just before you launch into your next report, Rachel, I need to pause. I tend to do this by the exception method. So if you wish to not support the paper, you have a little time to register your disapproval on the chat or via the hand. Otherwise, I'll take this as everybody in support. Well, nobody's typed anything or waved at me, so that was supported and carried. Thank you very much. In which case, we will now move on to Rachel and the update on the paper and card trial, please.
Thank you. Right, so yes, the paper and card trial. Twelve months ago at this AGM, it was agreed that we would develop a trial to collect paper and card separately from the rest of the recycling and also use that opportunity with the residents that were identified to attempt to improve the quality of what's collected within the remaining M D R stream. So just very briefly, because I think we've covered it a number of times, the three authorities that have been part of the trial, Boston Borough, North Cisteven and South Holland, we've collected separated paper and card from just over 7,000 households, trialling both in bins and in sacks, going off to a dedicated processor which has been palm paper for the purpose of the trial so far. Between September and May, we've collected just over 373 tonnes of paper and card. The quality reports have been coming back consistently high, and I've just had one back this week from the recycler saying that the quality of paper and card in there this time was 99.12%, so excessively high and consistently high quality measures that they've been receiving from us. We've been talking to them the last few weeks and they are very happy with the quality of material that's coming through. We've also as well as continuing to engage with the members of the public that are part of the trial, undertaken surveys. And I think at our last meeting, we'd had the results back from the North Cisteven survey. Boston Borough have done the similar survey now, asking more or less the same questions. And again, very well received by those participants within the trial around the separate receptacle for collecting paper and card. Majority of people are happy with the size of the bin that they've got. However, we are aware that these questions were asked prior to the Covid-19 pandemic and that we want to revisit that because certainly with the increase in waste tonnages, we need to understand if that's going to be a sustained increase and whether the sizes are too big, too small, still in the eyes of the public. Over 93 and respectively 94% within the two districts that have been surveyed of residents have said they would want to carry on with this going forward. So again, hugely positive, but we will repeat that. And what's been clear to us from public interaction engagement on the street with participants and also from the survey data is that people are starting to become clearer on what should go in the rest of their M D R, but they are still confused. As a result of which, you may or may not have seen, and I'll apologize for it now, last week's Waste Wednesday where Becky Allen and myself did a little montage and then a video explaining to people in reality what can go into our M D R bins and bags and why, which has been really well received and we're working on doing something consistently now. Each and every fortnight at least, there are specific messages that are linked back to the types of ongoing issues and major items that should or shouldn't be in the in the recycling so that we can keep the public engaged. And we're going to look at other ways of trying to get that out into the media as well. In terms of this trial, it's a 12-month trial, as we know, so we're still ongoing. In the paper that's attached for today, you'll see that there are some items that we still want to concentrate on looking to gather further information. I think John talked about some of the work we're doing at the moment to draft a T P assessment around the viability of this. We looked then around how it could be rolled out, what that would look like and the requirements for disposal. And also importantly, link that to one of our key objectives, which is around reducing the contamination in M D R. So the report that we've put together and I've included in the agenda packs is that we recommend that we continue to investigate the options and the data that we need before a firm and final decision is taken as to what we do in the next stages and also to continue to communicate and engage and use this opportunity to gather information and prove the benefits of engagement on the reduction of contamination in the mixed dry recycling. Whistle stop again of where we're at.
Very good. There's even one who wants to speak on this. So if anybody else wants to, please register now. Ivan, over to you.
Just, yeah, okay, thank you, Chairman. My, I am 100% supportive of the Purple Bin Paper and Card Trial. I think it's excellent. My concerns are, as Chris Allen knows, in Boston, we've got a lot of Victorian streets, narrow pavements. And these narrow pavements are an issue, especially when the residents of the houses that are situated on these narrow streets leave their bins out on the roadside. People with pushchairs, people in wheelchairs. It is a major, major concern, especially on the main roads going through Boston, especially also when people are going, taking the children to school. This is a major concern for me. And I've had this conversation with Chris and I think the group needs to look very, very carefully at what they give the residents to use because if we're having another bin, that's four bins quite likely that people have got to deal with. But if I might, Chairman, I'd like to, being as Rachel spoke about the mixed dry recycling, I'd like to just put a comment here if I might. There was a programme on television a few weeks ago about our dry mix recycling being taken to Turkey. And I'm sure it was sold to Turkey. And or Turkey was paid to take it. And they would take it quite happily because it's money in the bank for them. Their residents are dealing with it. It's not being dealt with in an energy from waste plant that we have here in Lincolnshire. We need to be more switched on about this. This concerns me greatly. And I think if we're forward-looking, using your words, Chairman, I think if we're forward-looking, why don't we start to try to organise ourselves in such a way that our dry mix recycling, contaminated or not, doesn't go anywhere out of Lincolnshire. Let's set the standard, the gold standard for our county. We're the second largest county in the country. Let's be the leader. And let's show people that we are going to deal with our waste successfully in our county. Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent. There's some interesting comment in there. And I can share certainly with the, as you well know, with the paper and card trial. Unfortunately, we're not dealing with that in Lincolnshire. We are dealing with that in King's Lynn, at Palm Paper, which is just across the border. But I think that's a bloody sight closer than Turkey, so I'm really quite happy with that. And I'm sure that John will be able to tell us a bit more about where our results ends up after it's gone through the M R F process, which is within Lincolnshire. And I think I'm correct. The last time I saw it, I couldn't see very much that was going very far. So do you have any comment on that, John, please?
Yeah, thanks, Eddie. I think it's a commercial fact that the waste and recycling industry is international. Outlets for materials are spread across the world. And it's become business as norm to be able to access those facilities to send various recycling streams and waste streams to where they can be processed. And in other parts of the world, it's cheaper to build and operate some of these facilities. And that's what's supported this international trade. Now, recent events have worked the other way on that one. They've stopped a lot of this either through import restrictions from the Far East, China is well documented. And their strategic approach is to stop, as they see dumping of Western problems on their shores. That's extended into Indonesia and Vietnam and Korea. So all of the Far Eastern countries, they are getting fed up with being seen as a dumping ground for the West. The problem we've got is that we have a dependency here in the West on cheap solutions being available. And as those cheap solutions get turned off, either they raise their quality criteria, so our processes can't meet it, then the problems are going to come back further onto our shores. That's what the government have tried to address in their resources and waste strategy. They realise that we need to be more independent. We need to be able to consume our own smoke here on the shores of the UK. And they're hoping that their policy changes will drive some of that inward-looking infrastructure and investment. And Council Stevens is quite right. What we need to do is that we need to create a market here in Lincolnshire where investors want to come and build those facilities. But much like our energy from waste plants, they have to be at a strategic scale and an economic scale. So they can make money and they can remain operational and in business. So that's the key is to get the best quality material in Lincolnshire available for them in sufficient tonnages. So they want to come here, build those specialist facilities. And if they're here in Lincolnshire, then they're probably going to service the rest of the UK. So that's a key element of the 10-year plan that I made reference to earlier, where we are going to unpick the tonnages and the material streams so we can talk to the markets and engage with them and try and get that investment here. So we can become ever more self-sufficient. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, John. I think that, yeah, I guess we'd go back to our sort of founding principle that when we started this or restarted this three years ago, that we would seek the most environmentally friendly as well as most economically viable method of disposing stuff. And there's no doubt that disposing of your recycling materials as locally as possible is definitely the way to go. Which is why we're so very pleased to find that palm paper on our doorsteps are really very keen to take good quality recyclable paper and cardboard. For that, we need to keep moisture content right. We need to prevent the contamination. And I have to say, the trial here has proved able to do that. So onward and upward, I guess. And we do have plans in place to roll this forward and roll it out across the county eventually. But I guess the guys have already done the pilots because it's easier to extend those than the others. But I'm sure we'll be able to put together a detailed end position for those recyclable materials if members are interested in seeing that. Ivan, you have your hand up still on my sheet. Is that a legacy or do you want to come back on what John said? The hand's disappeared?
Yes, I apologize. It was a legacy. This is new girl, in process.
Yeah, no worries. None of us are very good at this yet, I tell you. Particularly the next bloke on my list, who is Councilman Richard Wright, apparently.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the customers I am to speaking. Council Stevens raised some good points and I take on board what John just said. And you just said that if members are interested, I think this is a case of just scaled up fly tipping is what we're talking about. And yes, we would be interested in knowing where the end destination is, but there is a difference, isn't there? We do need to generate that domestic market, as being said, and the domestic market unfortunately will have to go beyond the bounds of Lincolnshire to be viable. But there's nothing wrong with the UK domestic market. But when it goes abroad, where it does at the moment, because that's where the market drives it, when I refer to international fly tipping, there's a difference between going to a market where it's correctly processed rather than Thai mountains in Vietnam or fridges in Malaysia and even worse in some other areas where they burn open tip rubbish. So I think we would like to know where it eventually ends up and that we know that it's being dealt with correctly. But at the moment, we have to recognise the fact that it's an international market and the local market isn't, the local market forces aren't there to drive it, although we should be aiming towards that as a final goal.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. I mean, I think the state and stuff around the world knows, everybody is well aware that we are required to dispose of our own rubbish. And that's everything from the stuff we put in our green bins, our black bins, all the way through to the nuclear waste that we've produced in the past. Local disposal within the UK has got to be the way forward. It's the proper, responsible, economically and environmentally friendly best way of doing stuff. Anybody else wish to comment on this, please? Apparently not. In this case, we will, again, we need to have a show of hands or whatever on this. So I'll do it the same way. If you wish to dissent from anything in this paper, please indicate no. Otherwise, your approval will be taken. No hands, no written stuff. So paper approved. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to, I think this is you and to John doing an update on the M B R contract.
Yes, okay, Eddie. So regards the mixed dry recycling contract, final tenors were received in March and the contract was awarded to New Earth Recycling West Limited, who trade as Mid UK Recycling on the 7th of April. The new contract began on the 1st of July after a three-month extension to the old arrangement. Mid UK will utilise their materials recovery facilities at K Thorpe and Barkston to service this contract. The price of the new contract has increased, but it will allow the partnership to proceed with its project to increase separated collections of paper and card across the county without penalty under the contract. So this will ultimately achieve savings as we will have a clean and dry paper and card material to sell to the market. And the rollout project will address contamination in the remaining mixed dry recycling. So that's the end of my verbal update, Chair. Thank you.
Blimey, that was quick.
I can obviously take questions from members if they wish.
Yeah. Well, there was invitation, guys, so go for it, please.
There you are. I was briefed pretty effective.
Yeah. Just a moment. Could you say that again so I can record it?
I was stunning, I think was the way to paraphrase it.
It's the shirt, mate. It's the shirt. Okay, so nobody has any questions for you on that, it would appear. So we'll move on to item 11 then, which is the performance measures update, which is Marvellous Matthew again, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I've got some more slides to show, but basically they're the some of the charts that were in the reports that you've seen in the agenda pack. So it's just to highlight some of the items from those charts. This is a report back on initially the theme one, which is the waste hierarchy, which are the two performance measures, key performance measures that the partnership have already approved. As you can see from this chart, the good news, we've now got the, pretty much the complete data for 2019-20. It's not yet been finally officially approved, but the recycling rate for the first time in several years has started to take an upturn. After all these years of it falling, we're heading in the right direction. Unfortunately, the other measure that we had, which is kilograms per household of waste, has gone slightly in the wrong direction. We've got slightly more waste this year than last year. It's actually fairly even, but and most of the increase is due to increased recycling, which isn't necessarily that bad of a thing. But it would be good to make sure we keep a handle on that, especially in the times we're in when we seem to be receiving increased waste during lockdown. So the recycling rate's moving in the right direction. The main reason or one of the reasons the recycling rate is moving in the right direction is because the mixed dry recycling has improved, both in terms of quantity, which is slightly up overall, but also because the percentage of contamination has gone down a little as well. We've seen more recyclables coming from mixed dry recycling collections during the year to March, March 2020. And that has seen a bigger contribution towards the overall recycling rate, hence the recycling rate moving in the right direction. Hence the recycling rate moving in the right direction. Um. There is uh something to to throw into that though, uh that's actually the bottom item on this um. On this slide here, that the green waste has also been a major contributor to the increased recycling rate in twenty nineteen twenty. We received more green waste. Um that does tend to be variable depending on weather conditions. Um so it's one to bear in mind for the future, that as we look ahead to twenty twenty one. Um we may not see as much green waste depending on what the weather does during the year and therefore we may, there may be. Uh a bounce back um rather than continued, continued growth at quite the rate that we saw in recycling last year. Um there is also something to beware of in terms of Covid nineteen. Uh we've already talked about how services continued really well during the. Uh Covid nineteen lockdown. Uh however, tonnages have actually changed. Um we've seen more waste. In terms of curbside collections especially. Um although interestingly, looking at the statistics. Uh because we didn't receive any waste at household waste sites largely for the months of uh. April and May. Um during those months, the total household waste that we dealt with as a, as a partnership. Was less than it was in those equivalent months last year. Um but it does look very much as though June is going to be higher. Uh we've not got all the figures in for June yet. But it looks like with the household waste sites open and curbside collections still continuing to be up on what they were previously. We are getting significantly more waste and that may continue during the year. So that's likely to have an impact on. Uh the tonnage, again, on the kilograms per household during the year. So that might be difficult to keep, keep control of this year. Uh also recycling rate, um because we lost the household waste sites for a couple of months. And the recycling rate at household waste sites is so very high. Um that could also make an impact on the recycling rate going forwards. So it's just to make sure that um. Whilst we've had good news in terms of recycling rate for the previous year. Um it's going to be difficult for this year, but hopefully working together, we'll be able to keep things moving in the right direction. Um the other three themes that we are looking to have. Um performance indicators on, as you may recall from previous papers that I've given to the partnership, are. Theme two was contamination of the recyclables. Um we are moving in the right direction, as I say, already with that. Um but one thing we have been looking to do that I reported previously is to put in our own sampling station to be able to to sort, to sort through. The contamination and to actually work out which materials are in there in what quantities and that will help us to actually take measures against that. And unfortunately, that has been delayed a little by the Covid nineteen situation, uh but we are hoping to have that sampling station in place soon. Um in terms of theme three, carbon, measuring our carbon footprint, uh there is information about the initial assessment in the. Annual report, which we've already talked about. Um we are looking to do further analysis and move that forwards. Um there should be more news on that soon, but I'm afraid there's, there's nothing specific to report on that at the moment. Um in terms of theme four, customer friendliness, uh we're looking to get some questions out to the public to find out what they think of the services we provide. And actually, that's gone forwards to um folks at the county council who are discussing. Uh the County Views survey, which is a new nation, a new countywide survey. Um that's already, I think there's already been one addition of, uh we're looking to include those waste collection, waste collection and household waste site. Um customer satisfaction questions in a future version of County Views. Uh but I have said to them, whatever um internal discussions happen at L C C. About County Views and what waste questions might go in them, that before they actually go public. Um the Waste Partnership needs to have a chance to see what's being proposed um in terms of those questions. Uh so you will see those at a future date. And that's everything I have at the moment in terms of performance measures. Uh so I will go back to you, Chair, and we'll see if there are any questions on that.
Thanks very much, Matthew. It's a very comprehensive report and it it's nice to see we're, we're going in the right direction. And all the changes we've made, uh which have been quite a few really, have all gone and and taken. Our journey in the right direction. It's, it's cool. I'm, I'm getting a bit of brain fade here. I've been. On this bloody team since god knows when. I don't, I don't think people appreciate just how much more tired it is being on these teams meetings. Everybody knows me, you got, they can just run through. You don't get a break in between. I mean, my coffee cup's been empty since about half past nine this morning. Anyway, anybody got any questions for Matthew? Please. Please. Ah, Chris, thanks.
I'll give you a bit of rest, Eddie, uh from your chairing functions. It wasn't really so much a question, more of a comment really, just to say uh. How grateful we are as an officer working group for Matthew's support and assistance in. Doing all the number crunching work. It's, it's a talent that Matthew has for, for dealing with that. It's not everybody's favourite cup of tea, but. With the richness of data that we have and that Matthew can interpret, then. It allows us as an officer working group to implement interventions that are far more effective and um. Can bring benefits far quicker to the partnership overall. So. Um it's not for everybody, um key performance indicators, but it is a really valuable. Uh resource and provides some really valuable insight that informs the work of the partnership. So. Uh thank you very much, Matthew, for that presentation. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Chris. It's a pleasure.
Yeah, that, thanks, Chris. Uh you're absolutely right. I mean, K P I's, you know, they do my. But somehow or other, Matthew manages to make it interesting. So well done, that name. Anybody else, please? Ah, see, stunned him into silence, Matthew. Well done, didn't you? So since there are no further questions, we need to, I think the last one of the day is. I'll sit quietly while you tell me whether, if you don't like it. And if not, we'll move on. Nobody's indicated their displeasure, so thank you all very much for your support for this paper. And we'll move on to whatever item it is, which is, I think, the future meeting dates. Is that right, Rachel?
Yes, it is. And the future meeting dates were on the, um included on the agenda page, so just have. Just need to know the partnership are happy with those dates and if so, I'll send electronic appointments.
Okay, thank you. So uh same rules apply. Uh if you don't indicate, then I take it you're happy with those dates. This is your chance. No indication, so thanks very much. Those dates will be accepted and circulated.
Thank you. I'll send the appointments later today.
Yeah, thanks, Rachel. Um the forward plan? It's been a text, so anybody got any comments on that? Anything they want to add? Anything they want taken off? No, Mr Coates, please.
Thanks, Eddie. It was just a comment that um it's likely that the second round of consultations from DEFRA aren't going to happen until. Uh the spring. So in terms of planning for it, uh round about the November meeting, uh we might. Um want to see if we've got any updated positions from DEFRA to raise with the partnership. Uh otherwise, it's likely to be for the March meeting where we'll have some. Uh greater clarity of position as to where DEFRA are heading in terms of the legislation. Uh and the environment bill and what might be coming our way. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, I I guess like everybody else, they got quite a bit on their plate. Uh anybody here got any comments on the forward plan? No? In that case, uh it's not.
Matthew's indicated to speak.
Aha.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to say that John was mentioning the um. The resources strategy consultations, the DEFRA ones. Um we don't know when they'll be coming out for further consultation. The one that has come out for further consultation. Is the plastics tax that H M R C are running. They actually brought out the consultation before Covid nineteen, if if anybody remembers it. And we prepared a draft response. They then put back the response date. So the actual, the date for responses is, I think, the middle of August, but I do already have the draft version. So unless anybody comes back with anything saying they've got, they've got anything particularly keen to say. Uh then the draft version that was previously approved will go in uh as our submission as a partnership.
Okay, so Matthew, do you need any alterations by then, Matthew?
Um. Uh by the end of July, really, but um I don't see anything, I don't see anything happening that's. Going to make a major change. Um I can recirculate the draft version so that, that's probably the best thing to do. If I recirculate the draft version. And say, this is, this is our response. We agreed previously. Is anybody happy, everybody happy with that?
Okay, mate, yeah, we'll do that. Thanks very much. Thank you. But as I was saying, is, anybody got any further comment on that? Um if not, it's not on the agenda, but um. Because of the exceptional circumstances and the fact that we're all pretty new at this, you know, if there is anything that's come to mind that you think you missed out on. Or anything you'd like to bring up that wasn't on the agenda, you know, indicate no before we close the meeting and and we can talk about it. I'll give you a couple of minutes to. In that case, as nobody's indicated that they have any other business, I'd like to thank you all. For your attendance this morning, for your contributions and for putting up with the, with me sitting on this end. And yeah, it's, it's been uh interesting. Thanks very much indeed. Yeah, hereby I close the meeting. So I would say safe journey home, but most of you are there, so take care until we meet again.
Thanks.